Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the invitation delivered by Representative Derek Katron, Cornerstone Nazarene Church, who is also chaplain of the Federal Police Department. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Thank you, God, for the blessings and provisions we have this day. We take time to acknowledge you and who you are and your goodness and your love and your grace and your mercy and your justice. We know you hold the world in your hands and nothing is a surprise to you and you're fully aware, but we ask today that you bless this meeting, our elected leaders, our city leaders, give them wisdom and insight, discernment tonight. Bless this great city and the people that make it a great city, that your will be done in it and in the personal lives of the people. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance to be led by City Commissioner Tommy Haynes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe someone's going to call or something. Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would entertain any motion on minutes from previous meetings?
Make a motion to be approved. Second.
Move by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Haynes. Is there any discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, those are approved. Ceremonial items? I would just take liberty to say that those of you that already know, we lost our honorary goodwill ambassador, Mr. John Hammond, who's been a tremendous asset to the citizens of Frankfurt and has been a great representative for visitors and others alike who have had an opportunity to talk with him when they would see him. And would just say that when we adjourn today, that we do so in honor and remembrance of John Hammond for his service to our community. And I know you all express your sympathies to his family as we all have, so we're very grateful. Next item would be citizen comments. Okay, Sackr has one.
She's kind of a regular.
My name is Donna Hekker. I'm here tonight representing Lockback, Frankfurt. Just wanted to say that several years ago, a group of citizens got together and dreamed up a network of new infrastructure that would be friendly to both pedestrians and cyclists and the top of our priority list of Fair and Kentucky State University to downtown Frankfurt. So with your support of a resolution tonight in favor of accepting that grant money to make that trail a reality, we just want to say thank you for getting us one step closer to realizing that dream. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any others? Next item would be ordinances, first and second readings. We have 4.1. This would be for a second reading and I would ask that the clerk read it by title and summary only. If there are any questions or motion there, we'll entertain those.
Mayor, I'm going to read that if that's okay.
Yes, I said that.
The clerk.
That's the clerk? I'm sorry. You know, I'm sitting here in a different...
That's all right.
I'm in legislative mode.
4.1.
Signal the reading clerk.
An ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt zoning regulations, Article 4, Section 4.20, Professional Office District and 4.22, General Commercial District of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance summary. This ordinance amends the city's zoning ordinance, Article 4, by amending Section 4.20, Professional Office District and Section 4.22, General Commercial District, by adding new uses, density, intensity requirements and incentives for properties from Ewing Street to Logan Street and the north side of Third Street to the Kentucky River.
Questions, comments? Not...I can make a motion?
Make a motion to be approved.
A second?
By Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Yes, that item is approved. Next item is 4.2 and ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary only and then we'll entertain questions or motions.
4.2 by title, an ordinance amending Chapter 50, garbage, solid waste, Sections 50.02, 50.04, 50.13, and 50.99 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances concerning collection of garbage fees. Summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 50 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances by specifically amending Sections 50.02, 50.04, 50.13, and 50.99 to provide that the owner, tenant, or lessor of a residential unit located in the city shall participate in the city's garbage program, that the city may, for a fee, pick up and dispose of property that has been set out on the curb upon eviction of a lessor, that the city may collect a residence garbage container and recycling container if the owner, tenant, or lessor has failed to pay the applicable fee and shall not return the containers until the amount due has been paid in full, and that the city may file a lien against the owner, tenant, or lessor of a property that has failed to pay the applicable garbage fee. Additionally, the reference to Board of Code Enforcement has been revised to state nuisance code hearing board.
Okay, I've heard that. Go ahead.
I think he's having a hard time picking up back there the voice.
No, he said somebody's phone was, I think it was giving him a signal burst.
Okay.
Because I heard, I kept hearing something and I was like, what is that? All right.
Move for approval.
Move by Commissioner Haynes, second by Commissioner Roach. Any further discussion? Now, clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 4.2 is adopted. Next item is 4.3. It'd like the solicitor to read this by title and summary only and then we'll entertain any questions or motions there.
This is an ordinance of the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky, providing for the issuance of the city's general obligation bond, Series 2014, for the purpose of providing funds to pay costs of a new municipal aquatic recreational center and related facilities, setting forth the terms and conditions upon which the Series 2014 bonds are to be issued and outstanding, ordering and providing for the levy of an annual tax to the extent necessary sufficient to pay the interest on and principal of the Series 2014 bonds, providing for a public sale of the Series 2014 bonds and the application of the proceeds thereof, and approving related documents and actions. And then by summary. For the purpose of providing funds to pay a portion of the city's cost of a construction acquisition and installation of a new 110,000 square foot municipal aquatic recreational center and related facilities located on a site within Juniper Hill Park at 800 Louisville Road, Frankfurt, Kentucky, and paying related costs, the city authorizes the sale and issuance of its $4,780,000 general obligation bond, Series 2014, under authority of the Kentucky Constitution in Chapter 66. The Series 2014 bonds will be payable from the tax revenues of the city and secured by an irrevocable pledge of the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city. The Series 2014 bonds are scheduled to mature on December 1, 2015 through 2040, and to bear interest semi-annually at rates established by competitive bidding. Redemption provisions, together with the form of the Series 2014 bonds, provisions with respect to registration, authentication, transfer, and exchange of Series 2014 bonds and provisions relating to the appointment and duties of a paying agent and bond registrar are set out in detail in the ordinance. The Series 2014 bonds will be issued in book entry form. As mandatorily required by Section 159 of the Kentucky Constitution, the ordinance levies annually such special tax separate and apart from all other taxes as may be necessary to provide for the payment of the Series 2014 bonds and the interest thereon when due and payable, such tax to be applicable to all property which is subject to taxation for city purposes from time to time and being unlimited as to rate or amount. In accordance with KRS 838.0609(c), the following text of Article 13 of the ordinance is set out in full. Article 13, Tax Levy and Pledge Bond Fund. For the purpose of providing bonds required to pay the interest on the Series 2014 bonds as and when the interest becomes due and in order to create a sinking fund to pay and discharge the principal thereof as the Series 2014 bonds become due, there shall be and there is hereby levied upon all of the taxable property within the city beginning in 2015 and continuing each year as long as any of the Series 2014 bonds are outstanding, a direct annual tax sufficient to the extent any other lawfully available monies of the city are not provided. For that purpose, as mandatorily required by Section 159 of the Constitution of Kentucky, and such tax shall be unlimited as to rate or amount. The proceeds derived from said special annual tax levied from time to time, together with other lawfully available monies of the city, provided for the purpose shall be deposited and carried in the bond fund, which shall constitute a separate and separate account in the name of the city and held apart from all other funds of the city, and any and all funds contained therein shall be applied only for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the Series 2014 bonds. The proceeds of said special annual tax and any other funds accumulated from time to time in the bond fund are hereby irrevocably pledged for the purpose of paying the interest on and principal of the Series 2014 bonds and shall never be used for any other purpose. The city hereby covenants with the holders of the Series 2014 bonds that it will levy said special annual tax in each year at whatever rates may be necessary from time to time in order to produce the amounts required in each year, to the extent funds are not otherwise provided, to pay the Series 2014 bonds and interest when, unless they mature or become due. If principal or interest should fall due in any year at a time when there are insufficient funds on hand collected by reason of the foregoing special tax levy, such principal and interest shall be paid from other available funds of the city and reimbursement therefore shall be made out of the special tax hereby provided when the same shall have been collected. All monies held in the bond fund which shall be depleted as of December 2 of each year except for a carryover amount not exceeding the greater of the earnings on the bond fund or one-twelfth of the principal and interest payments on the Series 2014 bonds for the preceding year ending December 1, to the extent not invested as herein after provided, shall be deposited in a bank or banks which are members of the FDIC, and all such deposits which cause the aggregate deposits of the city and any one bank to be in excess of the amount insured by FDIC shall be continuously secured by a valid pledge of direct obligations of the United States of America, having an equivalent market value. All or any part of the bond fund may be invested in investment obligations maturing or being subject to retirement at the option of the holder on such dates as the same may be needed for meeting interest and/or principal payments, and all such investments shall be carried to the credit of the bond fund. The competitive sale of the Series 2014 bonds is authorized in certain documents incident to such sale and the delivery of the Series 2014 bonds are authorized and approved. The foregoing provisions are intended to be a summary of the ordinance and references hereby made to the full text of the ordinance for a full and complete statement of its contents. The full text of this ordinance is available for public inspection during the normal City of Frankfurt business hours in the office of the City Clerk, 315 West Second Street, Frankfurt, Kentucky.
Thank you. And to say, just to, the reference to Chapter 66 after the Kentucky Constitution, that's KRS, Chapter 66, and also we talked about a special and separate account. Because you said separate and separate accounts, so I'll just, so nobody can come back and say that we didn't clarify.
Thank you.
Not that there is, but some people look for those. Any questions or comments on this one? Not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 4.3 is adopted. Next item is 4.4. This is a first reading. It asks to just be read by title and summary only.
By title, an ordinance to require an applicant to pay in full all taxes, fees, penalties, and interest due and owing to the city prior to obtaining any license, permit, or approval from the city. In summary, I'd like to state that this is a summary that I prepared. This ordinance requires individuals doing business in the city to pay all fees, taxes, interest, and penalties owed to the city or enter into a payment plan before obtaining a permit, license, or approval from the city.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Come this way. All right. Any objection? Have we put the order on the work session?
None.
Okay. I know 5.1, that'll be on a work session. 6.1. Oh, I have the... There you go. 6.1 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the federal highway aid program funds, and this is for the trails on the Pennsley Railroad line, pedestrian and bike trails. This is in the amount of $223,350 from the federal aid highway program and transportation alternatives, and it also requires a 20% match which can be in the form of in-kind or labor immaterials. So we thank all that have worked on this and looking forward to the completion. Any questions on this before we adopt? Need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Roach.
Second.
I couldn't tell who got, who was that?
Commissioner Hale.
Commissioner Hale.
Oh, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion? Questions? Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, resolution is adopted. Next item would be the consent calendar to call on the city manager to...I'm sorry, can I have your hand? Oh, okay.
I just wanted to see if we were going to pull some, a couple of things.
Oh, okay. Was it 7 points? Yes, go ahead.
Before we address that, if I could raise one issue, and that is, I know that tonight the commission will decide whether or not an employee will be entitled to a hearing with respect to termination.
Right.
And there's been a request that that hearing be scheduled at a different time so that a witness would be available, and if the commission is inclined to hold that hearing on a different day other than today, then we can let one of the witnesses go who is not otherwise scheduled to be here.
Sure.
So... Is there any objection? Does the commission want to schedule a hearing for the employee question?
Mayor, could we, I'm willing to wait. If you or the city manager could, I guess, send out an email with some available times and we could just respond back? Or do we need to do it tonight?
And you don't need to decide whether or not you're going to hold a hearing. At this point, it's just a question of whether or not you're going to hold a hearing tonight because I know we'd be going into closed session.
So we're not going to hold a hearing tonight? Is that what you're saying?
That's the question.
Okay.
To the folks out here, so...
Well, let me ask two questions.
Sure.
That goes right along with what...
Because the involved department head is not here.
Right, what Mr. Moore's asking about. I'm fine with a different night and I think everybody else is too. My second question is, I think there are three or more votes to have a hearing. Is that correct?
That's like a hearing.
Okay, I'm a no, but I think everybody else a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think any witnesses that are here could be excused? Thank you. Sorry, maybe excused. I shouldn't say could, then it's like, okay, maybe excused. They're always welcome to stay.
And then will the clerk or the city manager set out a scheduling question then?
Yeah.
And I apologize for interrupting.
This will likely be...
Good.
And then what were the, on the consent calendar, what, I had asked to pull one and then I, I think one of them we have gone ahead and pulled.
Staff would like to pull 7.10 and place that on the December or November, either one, November, December consent.
Which one would you look at? 7.6?
And I wanted to pull the one for the...
7.6.
30-ton, that's the one.
I think it was 7.6, but I don't...
That's it, 7.6, yes, sir.
Any objections? And you're talking about pulling it off entirely or putting it on the regular?
Mine was pulling it off and asking them to kind of aback, try to see if they can figure out a way to do it, not saying they can, but figure out a way to do it cheaper.
Okay. Any objections? CNN, those are, I pulled off the calendar and passed over. Who's today?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're all welcome. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1 of the consent is purchase six mobile, or six Mohawk mobile column lifts for the public works garage in the amount of $60,446. Item 7.2 is purchase a 2015 Timeco Model 600 street sweeper for $20173 that replaces a 2006 model. Item 7.3 is a $3,000 Kentucky League of Cities safety grant application for the sewer and street, or police departments that requires a $3,000 local match. Item 7.4 is submit a letter of inquiry for a $344,800 Art Place America National Grants Program for the Second and Bridge Street project, including the school playground. No match is required. Item 7.5 is a $29,086 and 80 cents 2015 Ford F., 350 pickup to replace a 1996 unit in the sewer department that is used for sewer main maintenance. Item 7.6 has been removed. Item 7.7, a zero-cost business associate agreement with USI Insurance Services to provide administrative and professional health insurance services advice. Item 7.8 is a $57,487.35 contract which includes a 15% contingency with design-build construction services for city hall interior renovation work. Item 7.9 is a $150,000 American Fire Grant application for fire hose and other equipment. A 15% match is required. Item 7.10 is pulled. Item 7.11 is a $14,500 three-year agreement with ECN Network to provide mass notification services for E911. Item 7.12 is not to exceed $97,676 engineering contract with Burgess and Nipple to design manhole rehabilitation in the Indian Hills, Cardinal Hills, Terre-Linda, Keyer-Linda, and Two Creeks neighborhoods. Item 7.13 is not to exceed $50,000 contract extension with Duke's Route Control for sanitary sewer mains. Item 7.14 is a $78,517.50 contract with Source Control Technologies to purchase odor control services in the East Frankfurt Pump Station and Blanton Acres subdivision. Item 7.15 is change orders number 2A and number 3 in the amount of $45,258 and a deduct of $10,903 respectively for Basham Construction and rental for, Basham Construction and rental for storm and sanitary sewer work in the Home Street area. Revised contract amount is $824,050. Item 7.16 is a $188,098.14 contract with Ozonia North America to overhaul ozone generating equipment in the sewer department. The ozone is used to disinfect our sewer effluent. Item 7.17 is trust participant agreement and property and casualty insurance renewal with Kentucky League of Cities in the amount of $660,921. Item 7.18 is personnel, and it's the appointment of William McKee as in sanitation and is a Tech 1 effective October 28, 2014. Item, or appointment of Courtney Fallis as telecommunicator in E911 effective 10/28/14. Appointment of Cody Neal, telecommunicator 1 in E911 effective 10/28/14. Appointment of Dustin Graybeal, Streets Department, Tech 1 effective 10/28/14. We have three resignations. Thomas Tillot, Streets Department, Tech 2 effective 10/2014. Resignation of Todd Maggard, police officer, effective 10/9/14, and resignation of David Williams, police officer 2, 10/2014. All three resignations would include the authorization, payment of accrued leave, and finally, the permission to make one conditional offer contingent upon successful completion of background medical, psychological polygraph, and drug screen examinations, which takes our department to 58 sworn officers. That concludes the consent agenda.
All members who signify their presence tonight will be considered to vote in affirmative on the consent items unless they file vote modification forms with the city clerk. I don't know if any have been filed or not. Not, then I maintain a motion on consent.
Move for approval.
Move by Commissioner Haynes, second by...
Second.
Commissioner Roach. These items are adopted. Next item, old business. Is there any old business? Commissioner Roach.
I just asked that the next work session, that Mr. Moore look over the information that you and I got, Mayor, from the Frankfurt Plant Board meeting and kind of enlighten us, since I'm pretty much in the dark afterwards.
You got that little sheet I did, right?
Right. Okay, thanks. Okay, any other old business? New business? Commissioner Roach. Does anybody else have a hand up? Okay.
Well, this is a very minor thing, but it's one of those things that I don't really understand why we're doing it, so I'm just going to see what everybody else thinks. We've got a sign when you come into Frankfurt, it either on the Versailles Road or on Louisville, I think it's maybe the...
1.7.
1.7. Says Sister Cities. I'd say there isn't 10 people in Frankfurt that know who our sister city is, and then I'd say there's not one that could tell you why it would even be a sister city. And I don't know of anything that we do with them or anything, so I don't know that we need a sign that says Sister Cities. We maybe could come up with a sign that would be something that might be more beneficial to the community, but I don't have a, I'm not that strong on it either way. I just don't understand we got, why we got the sign. Does anybody know?
I remember when we did it, but I don't remember the sister city.
I remember the sister city.
You do? Can you tell us?
It is San Pedro de Macarisa, Dominican Republic.
All right, what have we done with them that would make them a sister?
There was a process, the Rotary Club had a program, and I haven't seen anything really in the last four or five years. It was a Rotary Club initiative, and then there was an exchange. There was an exchange. I mean, we can, as far as I know, we're still affiliated, but...
Well, if somebody could look into that and see if there's anything, I just think it's kind of a waste if we're not doing anything and it just, I just look into it and if it's not something we need to do, we can not do it. If it's something we do, we can.
Bill Miller's Connecticut, that...
Right. Oh, he was. But we should...
Well, maybe we can do, like Rebecca could do one of those little public information, maybe we could do something on the cable.
Well, I think...
An educational.
Yeah, maybe we could. I just bring that up because a sister is going to equate that there is some connection, largely heritage usually, and I just find the connection pretty tenuous, and if there is a connection, then we could then do something with it so that we're actually doing something in collaboration with them, and then they can do something with us, and then thus it would make sense. But right now, I don't see where it makes any sense, except to maybe make people feel good.
We could, we could do something to make it make sense.
We could.
We could like, you know, we talked about internships at those forums, we could like maybe even pull our university...
Y'all come up with something.
We could do something, but are you suggesting if we don't do something, we should change it to something different?
I don't know. I'm just wondering why we have it. If y'all, we can look into that, and maybe we do need to have it, do something, have it. If we do, we maybe do something that means something. I told you, it's kind of minor. I'm done. Any...
Actually, it'd be good if we got information on that because I have had a person come and ask me, how do you go about being a sister city, and they were from Africa. So I, and I said, I don't know, but eventually we talked to the right person, so it's kind of fitting that he brought that up because I was hoping it went away because I didn't know who to go to. So if I could find out how that happens.
There's an organization, Sister Cities International, and a lot of times Rotary Clubs are the initiatives on that, but there's, I think Louisville has several sister cities, Lexington has a few, but I don't know that we've had anything in the last five years that I can recall. There was an exchange with some of their delegation... There was an exchange with some of their delegation that came up to Frankfurt, and some of our folks went down there.
Maybe we could have one student exchange.
They talked about that.
Well, you know, that might be a good trip. We could all go to Dominican Republic.
In February.
Yeah, it'd be good to go in the winter.
The whole board, the whole commission?
Yeah, that's right. That's all.
All right, any other...
That was a joke, by the way.
The ones that did go, they did. All right, any other new business?
No, sir.
If not, somebody's asked, entertain a motion.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Haye, second by Commissioner Bowles. All those in favor, signal by the same eye. Opposed, like some, eyes have. Thank you all. We did really well on here. I was going to say, I was going to say that on camera, but...